All else meeting in order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, you can be seated. Welcome everyone to today's meeting. First order, business is approval of the agenda, and I'll move it.
Second.
Alright, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes four zero. Just for everyone's knowledge Supervisor Carper is at a Iowa State Seminar on Planning and Zoning Rules and Regulations, so that's where he's at right now. Next up is the consent agenda, items two through four constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion, items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of amendments from the April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Number three is approval of claims, and number four from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas. It's the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. And I'll move that.
Second.
Alright, motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich, any comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion passes four zero. Number five, from Secondary Roads, Laura Severs. Item A is to receive bids for pavement markings two thousand twenty-five and return them to the county engineer for review and recommendation. Take it away Laura.
Thank you. We have a couple bids here. This will be for the southern half of the county, the paved routes there. The first bid received is Iowa Plains Signing from Slater, Iowa. They have a bid of two hundred and seventy thousand and five dollars. They have a bond with their bid. This is Vogel Traffic Services from Orange City, Iowa. They have a bid of two hundred and five thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and ten cents. And they have a bond with theirs.
Who was that again Laura?
Vogel Traffic Services.
Okay, thank you.
Out of Orange City, Iowa. This is Sir Lines A Lot out of Lawton, Iowa. They have a bid bond included. And a total for a hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. I would recommend then going with our lowest bidder, Sir Lines A Lot out of Lawton, Iowa. With a completion date of September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. For, again, the total was a hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
I'd move that. Second that. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
You probably should move to receive the, all the bids.
Oh, that's right, yeah, as well, thank you Joshua. Yeah, motion to, move to receive the bids for the pavements markings for two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Alright. Number six, from Deputy County Recorder Diane Swoboda Peterson. Approval to have the Treasurer's Office refund the county portion of transfer tax in the amount of four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents to Buchanan, Beblor, Gabor, and Meese Law Firm.
It was supposed to be recorded in Winnebago County and they recorded it here.
Okay.
Staff missed it, do our best to catch it. It was a million seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar sale, that's why the transfer tax is so high. And they have requested it from the state, which is in the code of Iowa, and they're requesting our portion back, so.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Second.
Alright, motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Diane. Up next from myself and Supervisor Nelson, we got a meeting last week. Was it two weeks ago, last week? With AGP and Chamber of Commerce, they originally last year had signed a development agreement. You can see in the backup, they were, had different items to hit and benchmarks, and the only one they've fallen short on is instead of creating a hundred and thirty jobs, they're at one twenty-eight, so per the developer agreement, they need to have just an amendment to that saying that we would waive, excuse me, waive that benchmark of having to get a hundred and thirty jobs, and so but they are still hiring, looking to fill those two positions, so they just need the supervisors to waive that, so.
Yeah, so this tax abatement that they had for their expansion down there in Sergeant Bluff was a joint deal, they got abatement from the county, they got some money from the state, and so there were certain parameters that they had to meet for the county abatement, and there were certain ones that they had to meet with the state, they've actually exceeded everything that they needed to for the county. The employment deal that Chairman Bittenger just talked about was a state parameter. And so, but because we're in this together, both parties have to agree to allow this extension. And so, that being said, I think it's a no-brainer to give the extension because they have far and away exceeded everything that we requested of them. And they're actively working for it, and honestly, every business is struggling with trying to hire personnel, and so it's not a problem, you know, that's, that only they're dealing with, and so it was quite an investment that they made down there in Sergeant Bluff, and will continue to make into the future, and so I would, I would definitely support this.
Alright. I'll second it. Alright. All in favor, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes four zero. Just to note, they, they've invested over two hundred million dollars, correct, right? Supervisor Nelson, they said in the last couple of years, well, last three or four years of that plant rebuild, so.
Yep.
So two hundred million investment, which is great to see.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did we do item seven?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over that, thank you Matthew. I apologize everyone.
It's just seven hundred seventeen thousand.
Right, yeah. I was just so excited to just to get this agreement waived, thank you. Sorry, I get, I get, I get a little excited over things, man, just happy to be here. Thank you for that, well alright, so that motion passes.
Can we go back to that one also, I didn't catch the motion, I know you said you support it.
Yeah, I would, I would move it.
Yeah, motion by Nelson, second by Dietrich.
You, you heard right Michelle, so.
Yeah. Alright, we'll go back to that. Thank you, yep. Alright, let me go back to that, I apologize everyone. Going back to item number seven, board from the Board of Supervisors and myself. This was the approval of consent for the LEC Authority's use of seven hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and twelve cents worth of funds provided by the county under the May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two Board Supervisors Board Action item for additional project-related purposes of legal fees, costs, expert slash consultant fees, and project engineering and design fees, owners, and owners fees. What this is, the LEC Authority and the county have identified, and you can see it in the backup. We've identified available non-bond funds that the Authority has received over the course of the LEC project. After examining these funds in greater detail, we are able to actually use these out of miscellaneous account to help cover these extra costs that are, that we are incurring. And so the LEC Authority has to get approval from the city and the county to do this. The city, this, from what we were told today, the city, this will be going before the city council next week. Their portion is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that they gave towards the project, and and they'll be asked to reallocate that towards project legal fee costs, engineering design fees, and so for the LEC to be able to use that, we'd have to approve to, to change that board action. And with this, this would, in essence, going into the future, we would not have to do any additional twenty-eight agreements with the LEC, and so once again, whatever is unspent of this, we'll come back to the county. And so Supervisor Nelson, anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, so essentially, we've had the taxable bond account that we've been paying to build this structure. And when we got to last fall, which a lot of that, or in fall actually, I'll say, excuse me, fall of twenty-three, when the original substantial completion date should have been hit, we had money left over, and we decided at that time for the county to give money to the Authority to pay for our engineer, our attorneys, that sort of thing, as the project got delayed. And we wanted to save, it was a little over a million dollars in the taxable bond account in case there were change orders or things that we were gonna have to pay, well as time has gone on, we really haven't had any expenditures, a lot of this work that's been going on out there has either been rework or warranty work, so a lot of it hasn't been at any expense to us, we've obviously been paying our legal fees and our owner's rep and our engineer, but a lot of this construction, there haven't been large construction bills. And so what we're looking at is that we need to take this money out of this bond account, and we can put it in miscellaneous funds, which then can be used on these legal expenses or come back to the county. And so we can apply some of those construction-type expenses to take that money out of taxable bonds, and so that's, that's in essence what this is. We were kind of saving this in case we needed it, and we're at a point that we don't need it for any construction or projects out of the, the LEC.
So, myself and Joshua and Mark were on a call with Alarson Cooney, our bond lawyers, and they correct me Joshua, if they would, it's, I know you've reviewed it, and Alarson Cooney and everything seems to be above board. It's permissible, and so.
Yeah, just to be clear, these are not bond funds that are being, you know, we're changing how the accounting is being done, but it's not bond funds that are being transferred.
Right. It's money that the county has sent over to the LEC Authority, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Alright.
I'd move it.
I'd second it. Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, I mean, motion by
Nelson.
Nelson, excuse me, second by Bittenger, excuse me, wow guys, I apologize. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion passes four zero. This is a big, it's a big help to us to have these funds available, so. Alright.
Mr. Chair, before we go into item nine, if I, and I'm not sure of the appropriateness of this, but we do have a farmer citizen that I'm sure would love to get back in the field, if we could let him have his couple minutes for citizens' concerns and then come back to the budget review, he may be appreciative of that, if not, that is for you to decide, so.
No, I think that'd be appropriate.
If that's okay.
Yes sir, yeah, just say your name, that's all we need.
Bruce Shornson, the county stopped a project that I have on a property of mine that's in a acreage estates area of the county, just north and east of, north and west of Lawton. Basically, they're telling us that we can't go forward with removing the dirt because we're not using it on our own property, or we're letting it go wherever, wherever. Now, in reviewing the, the information, we noticed that your definition of a borrow pit in the county is different than the state of Iowa's definition of a borrow pit. Where all we're doing is, we applied for a permit from the county to get a driveway access at the top of the hill. Because we have four and a half acres there, and we can't get access to it without taking the hill down. Well, evidently that's considered a borrow pit because we're not using all the dirt for our own use. Now, I've hired a contractor to, to do this, and by the county stopping me of doing this, now the contractor, you know, my costs go up, you guys are aware of those kinds of things. And I just don't think it's totally unfair. It's not a borrow pit, I've had several neighbors contact me and say, we're glad you're taking the top of the hill off, now we can get snow removal, we can get out of here in the bad roads, so that, that's the problem, so evidently there's a, there's a zoning issue here, and it needs to be taken care of somehow, it seems very unfair that we just can't remove the dirt from the top of our hill so we can get an access. That's all we're after, so. If you have any questions for me, I mean, the county zoning guy's the one that stopped us and said that, that we're not, we're not doing it according to, to the rules evidently.
Okay.
So, anybody got any other suggestions?
Well, I think one of the first course of actions I can get with Dan Priestley about this, and Mark, and I can probably get with him and just see if there's any other ways to be done.
And your county engineer has given us approval for the access.
Okay.
You know, and, and Mark Nara looked at it five years ago, and he said, the only place you can have access is the top of the hill. And I said, I agree, I, I fully understand that, but you gotta get rid of the dirt, you don't mind just a ditch going through the hill to, to get it, that's no good either, so.
Yeah, so this kind of goes along with the email that Dan Priestley sent out yesterday, if everybody read that, and we can discuss more of this kind of during board concerns, but when I saw that Bruce was here, I thought we could let him have his, you know, let him have his piece, and then we can discuss, because I got some more thoughts on that, and I know we can't deliberate too much here, but I've got some thoughts about that specific zoning ordinance, and that was put in in two thousand eight, so it's been quite some time, you know, but.
Okay. Well, anyway, we'd like to start our project back up so we can finish it, so as soon as possible, so thank you.
Where's the, and the dirt, and that's for the school in Sergeant Bluff, or what's?
I don't know where the dirt's going, I, I don't care.
It doesn't make any difference to me, I want the dirt to come down so that I can have an access, and I really
don't care where it all goes. I've used some of it, but obviously, that's, it's thirty-foot-high embankment. That's a lot of dirt. I don't need all that dirt.
Sure. Anyway, thank you. Mrs. Shornson, yeah, thank you. Alright, we will continue with the meeting, we'll come back Dan. Yeah, during, yeah, board concerns, we'll talk about that, yeah. Thank you. Alright, continuing on to number nine, budget review discussion for fiscal year twenty-six, miscellaneous review and action of all funds, so. We'll start off with the auditor and.
Okay, so just a brief review, since the last meeting, we've incorporated the additional expense looking just starting with the general basic fund of a hundred and fifty thousand for the well cap costs. And we've added six hundred thousand for the marshal room and board, which puts our deficit at one point oh one seven million. There's no other recommended moves that are pending unless you decide not to move all of the FICA funds. Then if we look at the general supplemental, we do have the potential to reduce the levy to last year's levy, which has not been done, that would be to reduce the the current tax amount to be received by four hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. And last week it was mentioned that there may be a need to increase due to work comp liability to a hundred and sixty thousand. We have a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget on that expense, and there was no motion made to change that, so those are pending items in general sup. Rural basic, we have a pending item to reduce the levy to last year's levy, which would be a reduction in tax revenue of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. And in rural supplemental, what we would need to do is reduce the auditor's transfer by that same amount. And actually, the rural basic, we'd be reducing the auditor's transfer line, the rural supplemental, we'd be changing the auditor's transfer line and reducing the tax to be received. If we look at the beginning balances and projections, there was a suggestion to increase the marshals revenue, and that's, I think, needs to be discussed and guidance need to be given on the amount. Currently, we've reduced the marshals revenue by two million, so it's at one point two million in our projected beginning balances. And there was anticipation that we may be able to increase that by six hundred thousand, and Ryan, would you like to discuss that item?
Yeah, what I did was, I took the marshals' numbers and projected a hundred and ten for the remaining of the year. And that calculated out to be one point eight million and like sixty-seven thousand. So that was six hundred thousand above the amount that, you know, we had, you know, say reduced the budget down. Or, not budget, but our year-end estimate. Because it had been moved down to one point two, now with the inmates at a hundred and ten, it was looking like it would trend to one point eight.
Okay.
So even if we did an increase of a half million over six, versus six hundred thousand, it would be pretty conservative.
You're right.
We'd hit that mark.
I think some of you saw the, excuse me, our census today was at eighty-nine. I was talking to Chairman Bittenger before the meeting, some of it's out of our control. But I'm, you estimated it at a hundred and ten?
Yes.
Which is up from a hundred, or?
That's what we, you know, changed the budget to, and for fiscal twenty-six was a hundred and ten. And I just, because at the time, we had a hundred and eighteen, so I actually, you know, just, I just used a hundred and ten for that estimate.
I would have, last week when I stood here, I would have told you a hundred and ten was no problem, this week, since we're down, I just I know, I don't know how Ryan feels about it, him and I haven't had an opportunity to talk about it, if you, if you want to err on the side of of being conservative in your projection. I mean, if you, if we're down, if we drop below twenty, I think I figured, you know, minus twenty is about a hundred and twenty thousand over the next sixty days.
Yeah.
So that would, that would mean we'd be running at about ninety. I, I think, I just don't see us running any less than that. But I think that number can go up and down, so Ryan, I'm gonna leave it up to you on what you're comfortable with as far as how you wanna how you want to estimate it for the rest of the year, I mean, there may be days where we're at a hundred and twenty for three, four days, and there may be days where we're at ninety for three or four days. So, I just, I, I only bring that up so that you can make the best educated guess that you can, and, you know, what you Ryan, what your comfort level is at, I'm good with.
I reran it at a hundred, and that would have given us one million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand. So I would say, just to be conservative, I would go with five hundred thousand additional revenue for the rest of this fiscal year.
And we understand that your inmates are getting sentenced, or really, you know, I mean, there, there's, like you said, there's gonna be ebbs and flows, and you know, so that's just part of it.
Yep, absolutely. So.
What would you like me to plug in for that?
So are you looking for a motion to amend?
I think for the beginning balances, we don't need a motion, but just directions so that we know that we can anticipate the beginning balance correctly.
Could be up higher.
And if we're estimating it too high, we're just gonna be short next year.
Sure.
So it's your, it's your call.
It all makes sense, I think, off of Ryan's recommendation, I think five hundred thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we could, I think we could plug that in, and for the beginning balance and.
Okay, so if we change that to five hundred thousand for marshals revenue, there were, there is a very good find. While we were working in here, I, we were looking at the auditor's transfers, and auditor's transfers, the ins have to equal the outs. So I was showing Ryan some of the paperwork and how that's audited. And discovered that the fiscal year twenty-five auditor's transfers were not balanced. There was a thirty-nine thousand dollar transfer that was to be budgeted to move from lost to rural rural basic, which is where we're really short right now. And that thirty-nine thousand wasn't recorded as going into rural basic, which means that we can do a budget adjustment to change that, because that was discussed, approved during the budget hearings, it was a clerical error that it wasn't included in the budget. So we have an increase of thirty-nine thousand dollars in our beginning balances of the rural basic fund, and if you recall last week, we were short about forty-some thousand to make it through two months, so that was a very good finding in the rural basic area. And there were no other changes in the beginning balances. So if we go back to our reserves versus expenses worksheet, and this, this bottom area here, we can see that our ending fiscal year twenty-six reserves will be anticipated to be at around twenty-two point nine two, general sup at four point two, and rural basic at fifteen point three seven. And that's, that's with the, the amounts that are currently plugged into the budget there. And if we look at our two-month expenditure amount, we've, with that extra beginning balance and last week's motion for additional marshals revenue to be budgeted for fiscal year twenty-six, we're actually have enough to cover our two-months expenses and have two, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand extra in the rural, or the general basic and the general supplemental funds. And if we look at the, the rural basic and the new rural supplemental, we're short seven point eight thousand dollars, so that thirty-nine thousand really helped in that area, so we're smaller numbers, so, so we have a, a smaller difference there, so our overall total is five hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one. And that's where we sit right now. I don't think anything's changed a lot in looking at the the actual levies. If we look at current as of last meeting, those changes that were made affected the general basic, which we're limited on, so it's not gonna help the levy in that area. But it does help the balances as far as how much we'll have to use from reserves to, to meet the needs. So if we look at where we're at with the the levy here in the city, so with the maximum in the notice, I think we looked at this last week, is eleven point seventy eleven dollars and seventy-two cents additional for a hundred thousand dollar residence. Eleven dollars and seventy-two cents of, to the county would be more than what was paid in fiscal, in the last year, and we're down to eleven point seventy. And then for a rural residence, we were at eighteen dollars and fifteen cents, and we're to eighteen dollars and thirteen cents.
So except for the seven thousand, eight hundred something, we are no longer short in a, on a cash flow basis throughout the fiscal year?
According to our audited funds, we would have sufficient amount to last the two months, which is what they basically look at in our audit.
Okay. And the five hundred thousand we just talked about, does that improve your very beginning number in general basic of one million, seventeen thousand? Since we'll start with higher reserves, if we used reserves?
That's gonna increase this general basic beginning balance right here, the nine point eight seven beginning balance in the general basic fund.
Okay, so that's already accounted for?
Yes.
And then if we apply the one million we're short in general basic, we end up with the twenty-two point?
Yes, that is, that is with the deficit taken into account.
Okay. So how much more exactly is the two-month expenses than what we need? It's that much more? Five hundred twenty-nine thousand, or five hundred twenty-one overall?
Five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, if you are looking at, we, if we just add up general basic and general sup, because that's kind of flexible of what goes to general sup. Five hundred and twenty-nine thousand is what we have extra above the two-month amount that's budgeted. Yeah, this, I see, we're seeing this five twenty-one is everything added together. Yeah, this, I see, we're seeing this 521 is everything added together. So that's your, your general basic, all four funds added together.
So as a percentage, I mean, if I'm trying to conceptualize how much we have to work with over what we need, you would divide that into the 8.9?
The total two-month expenses.
Or the 8.9, since it's for general basic and general sup?
The 529, yes.
Okay. So we're almost 6% in excess of the bare minimum, in other words. And this all assumes a flat levy rate?
Let me look at this one more time. Been a week. No, this one encompasses the changes in, that I mentioned in column G over here. So that, this table encompasses those changes. This top table is if, oh, maybe I'm backwards. Let me see here. The top table is going to be if you leave the budget as is. The bottom table is going to be if you revert back to last year's levy.
And we've been talking about the second table.
Yes, we've been talking about the second table because I know it's been expressed to hold the levy constant. And so that's why you're seeing the rural basic in the first scenario is higher because the levy, the levy is higher. So you're receiving tax revenue more than in this table here. You don't have as much tax revenue. So you're going to see a lower amount of, of revenue.
Which, I mean, I would submit, that's our goal, is we want to hold the tax levy the same.
Of course.
Yeah, so.
What's the amount of, that we're going to need to be looking to save over the fiscal year? That we're using, what's the amount of reserves we're using now that we will not have next July 1? Because our overall reserve level is?
The total amount is 979,212. So if you look at this kind of column H here, this is the amount for each of the funds. So we'd be balanced in rural supplemental because we're only moving what would be received in tax revenue. If you made this action to reduce the, the amount there, we would have 93,851 deficit in rural basic. This one here, 482,411 is in rural sup, in general supplemental. And then this amount here remains the same in both scenarios, and that's your general basic. So that would be the deficit. And I, I know that, I think we're a little more transparent this year with everything that's going on with the budget because it's new players in the game figuring all of this out. But when you do look at the past history, there very often has been a deficit where the expenses outweigh the revenues. And it's always kind of just, I think, been assessed by the budget director where we're at and, and if that's doable or not. And then there's also the budget adjustments that have not been done that can shift the beginning balances. And potentially, if you, you know, had that much of a find in the budget adjustments, you know, then that's going to kind of wash that out too. If we're anticipating that the budget adjustments will change it a little bit.
So we're a million 17 short in the general basic, and then we're, how much in the general sub 482?
482, 411.
Okay.
Rural basic is 93,851.
Yeah, so that revenue from the jail really helped.
Yes.
For this year. And it could for next year, too.
I think this here is our total right here.
Well, it seemed like we shouldn't, we would need to make those motions go ahead and, in your column, column G, make those motions to go ahead and, if our goal is to keep the levy flat, we'll have to use reserves.
Yeah, so it's a deficit of 1,583,493. Need to cheat off me, Matthew?
That's good. You carried the one, I see.
Yep.
Three times there.
That is not common core math. What do we got plugged in there for the health fund?
Yeah, it's not.
I believe that's 1.65 million. Yeah, 1.65 is what's plugged in for that.
And then we're going to transfer, what, what do we have, kind of plug in there, half million, 600,000 yet this year? That affected our beginning.
I forget.
Yeah, that's why.
That one, we put in 500,000 additional.
So I guess Melissa, you just have to tell us if that's going to be enough or not, obviously. And then we'll have to discuss if we need to increase contributions for this next year. I don't know if we need to do that tonight or next week or?
You know, that's the one hard part about the health fund is you never know what's coming. And unfortunately, people get, you know, bad surprises. So hopefully, since we only have two months left, 600 would do the trick. Now, we need to have this in the, in, to the account by June 30th. So it's not like a next fiscal year thing?
Sure.
And then any increases that we would make to premiums, any increases that we'd make to deductibles, out-of-pocket maxes, whatever, you know, we decide that would be best for our plan, that could be done in January, for January 1st, since that is the calendar year in which our plan runs on.
For the, for the deductible, you mean?
Yes. Or like out-of-pocket max, or, you know, if you want to, you know, increase premiums July 1st, we can look at that too. But that should be done in time to get people to decide what they would like to do with their health care for July 1st.
So if we're going to do the, if we're going to increase the plans or the employee contribution, we should do that sooner than later so that they can?
Depends on if they would like to stay with the PPO, you know, how much would we raise that? How much would we raise the HMO? Would that give people incentive to move to the HMO plan, which obviously we have to pay less for in medical claims? And that, you know, in turn, would give them time, hopefully, to make that decision for their family, what would work best for them.
I mean, obviously, we're, we got to transfer money, but I think you told me a month or so ago that this fund has just been gradually, that even our increases every year just haven't put a dent in it.
Well, this year, it's been two, two bad months, and me and Ryan talked about it today. The rest of the year seemed to go, okay, two bad months and it's a million dollars. And that, you know, you really weren't planning on, but that we have to take care of because we're self-insured and we want to stay that way. So.
So it may be best if I maybe get, get with, together with you this week and get some options to bring back.
Yeah.
So just to be efficient tonight and not, to know what we're really dealing with. Bring some options back next week.
Okay.
And I can do that.
Can I ask, I heard 600, but we had put 500, so it would be 1.9. You, you said 600, though. Is that?
Well, I would like to go to the higher end.
Okay.
Myself, just, you know, for that little bit of cushion. I mean.
Well, I think we should. I mean, we should plan for the worst if we got a chance, yeah. Have we had to move funds at the end of the year like this before?
No, it's the first time.
Yeah. So we're going to have to make some changes.
I mean, every, and everything, you know, the cost of medical, the cost of pharmacy. You know, everything just comes together in the perfect storm, and now we need to make our fund healthy again.
So if I alter the beginning balances to add that 100,000 in the beginning balance difference, then here's the new sheet.
But that number was negative, what, 400-some last week?
Right.
Yeah, so we've made up a lot of ground, for sure.
And that's going to affect the general sup, not the general basic.
If I could reconfirm with you, Tina, sorry to put you on the spot, but about interest rates, can you just talk us through, you know, once more, what you're looking at there? And if there is some sort of economic disruption and rates are decreased within the next fiscal year, how, how is our exposure?
So going into, let me start, Tina Bertrand, Waukesha County Treasurer, sorry. In, for the budgeting, and I don't actually have it in front of me, so I'm going to go off of my memory. I believe when I did the projections for interest, I brought them down to 3% or less. Looking forward for FY '26 now, you know, that it's kind of a moving target. Interest rates haven't dropped yet. We do anticipate that they will continue to drop. How far they're going to go down, I don't know. You, you know, I mean, at this point, nobody really knows what that's going to be. On any of our long-term debt right now, or, excuse me, our long-term investments, I'm looking at some of that right now, and our rates have actually been holding pretty good. We just bid $2 million and we're over 4%. On some, you know, I don't have a lot over 4%, but we are getting some of those interest rates coming in. Our daily rates that we have on some of our main accounts right now are still holding firm at 4.1%. So we've been, we're, we're doing better at the end of FY '25 than we thought we were. And again, I projected everything to come down to about 3%, and I just kind of looked at the historical. So, and I don't know if Ryan can look up where we're at year-to-date on interest, or if Michelle can do it. I do know that I bumped up a little bit more interest this year because I think we stayed longer than what I did, what I projected last year because we're actually anticipating rates coming down during FY '25. So. We're helping with the, I think, the, you know, and we're looking at how, how we're actually, one of the other things we're doing is some of our other money market accounts. I'm doing a lot of short-term, when I say short-term, I'm talking three-month role, you know, CDs to get that higher interest rate just to bump our interest up as high as we can. So what we're doing now is we have a constant rollover of CDs.
Well, it's good to know we've programmed in some decrease.
Yes.
So if that hits the news, we're not all really concerned. It'll take time to, to affect us.
It will. But I did, like I said, starting FY '20, FY '26, July 1st, I had our rates already coming down.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I would, going back, Michelle, to your table there, I would go ahead tonight, I got, if the board agrees, let's move on these, on this column G, make the motions to keep us at a flat rate.
Do you want to make them one by one? So the ones that are, the first one would be, would you like me to kind of?
Yeah.
Help you with?
Yeah, what's the right motion? Yeah, that's fine.
So the first one would be a motion to reduce the general supplemental tax revenue by 474,481.
All right, a motion to reduce the general supplemental tax revenue by 400? You said 74 or 84?
474, 481.
Yeah, 474, 481. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second by Dietrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes 4-0.
Next one will be to increase the work comp, if Melissa still desires 164, the work comp liability. So to increase the work comp expense by, by 10,000.
All right, motion to increase the work comp expense by $10,000.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes 4-0.
The next one would be to reduce the auditor's transfer from rural basic to rural supplemental by 129,800.
All right, motion to reduce the auditor's transfer from rural basic to rural supplemental in the amount of 129,800.
Sorry.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes 4-0.
That was Bittenger and?
Nelson.
Okay. The next one will be to increase the auditor's transfer in rural supplemental by 129,800.
All right, motion to increase auditor's transfer in rural supplemental by 129,800.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
And the last one will be to reduce the rural supplemental tax revenue by 129,800.
All right, motion to reduce the rural tax supplemental amount in the, by 129,800.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes 4-0. All right. With that, is there any more budget discussion? Next week, we'll have, we'll deal with, like, did officials pay? But of course, we don't want to, we don't want to rush this today, and we have any other, anything for the miscellaneous review for the budget? Michelle, is there anything else you have? Ryan, is there anything you have we need to be aware of? Okay. All right. Any supervisors, all right? Not hearing any? All right, we will move on. To item number 10, reports on committee meetings. I'll start off. I, I don't have any. Does anybody have any?
I do not have any.
All right, all right, hearing none. All right, move on to citizen concerns. All right, all right, hearing none. All right, move on to citizen concerns.
Just wanted to bring attention, we posted on our Facebook page, but our civil service commission uh posted. The testing, the upcoming testing for uh deputy. So that list, once it's compiled, will be good for one year, and when there's openings during that year period. So if there's anybody out there that's interested in being a Woodbury County deputy, uh they can go to the to the county's website, click there. We do still have one or two openings, I think, left in the jail still. I know we've hired a few, we've had some really good applicants here recently, but uh. So, one way or the other, if you wanna join the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office family. Uh go on, go to the website and and, you know, uh we're looking for good people, so just wanted to say that, since it opened yesterday.
All right, thank you, Chad. All right, seeing other citizens. All right, any board concerns?
I just wanted to visit, I know that uh Citizen Bruce Hornson left, that spoke earlier. And we got the email from Dan Priestley yesterday regarding his borrow pit, so. I talked with Dan yesterday, Priestley, for probably close to an hour on this. I drove by the site today. And it's kind of interesting, um this uh the site that that Bruce has, this plot of land is. Northwest of Lawton, right on uh uh old Highway twenty, Craxville Road. Drive right by it all the time. It's a very big hill, very steep hill. Um and so what's going on is he's, he hired a contractor in the area just to uh. Take that hill down to grade to where it would be usable, and and talking with Bruce, he wanted a uh. A driveway up to his property off of the road, and it was too steep, as he said, and there wasn't enough site distance, so. He's kind of in a tough spot because he he's got this property that he can't even get access to because it's too steep, but he can't take the hill down. Because of how it's zoned, so um what's he to do? I I talked with Dan about why that is, and so in Woodbury County. If ground is in ag preservation or ag estates, farmer landowners can. Take a hill down as long as that dirt is being used elsewhere in the property to build something up, or if they haul it onto. Another property that they own, doesn't have to be adjacent, just other property that they own that they use to build something up in the purpose of agriculture. Which is something that we've done on the Nelson farm. We've taken hills down to build up a area for county yard. Like, that's very. Common all across the county. What what Bruce is doing is that he's having this dirt excavated and is ending up down in Sergeant Bluff for. A new build site down there, there's a low spot there. And because it's ag estates, there is not a conditional use, there's not even a conditional use process for him to go through to do this. Now, he didn't know this prior to doing this work, so that was kind of just kind of rogue work that he did. But I guess my concern is that in Woodbury County, we have extremes. We have extremes that are extreme peaks. And then we have extreme areas that are just pancake flat. And to have any kind of development on either one, you gotta build one up and you gotta take the other one down. So there's a lot of dirt that gets moved. I mean, go look at the new DOT site there on Highway twenty. The amount of dirt that they move there is just unbelievable, and I grew up where they just four-lane Highway twenty east of Mowville. The amount of dirt that they had to move to four-lane, that was incredible also. So I mean, this this happens. Um this ordinance was put in in two thousand and eight, so almost twenty years ago. I was speaking with a, I called a constituent today to talk about this, who had been involved with county government back then, and I said, you know, what do you think of this ordinance? And he said, well, the board at that time, which none of us were here, our zoning staff was there, but that, the board at that time, this guy felt was that it was kind of very anti. Rural, it was just kinda like, hey, if we make it miserable for them, they'll all leave, and then we won't have to worry about the rural part of the county, you know? Um that was his opinion, but I think it's worth looking at this ordinance again. And I guess my question is, um and this would be for the zoning commission and if we want them to look at this, but my question is, is how do we. Promote development if we can't level up or build up some of the property that we have? And he mentioned the state's definition of a borrow pit. I'm not sure what that is, we'll have to look that up, but. I would say leveling a hill down is a lot different than a borrow pit. You know, digging a big hole in the ground or something like that to retrieve rock or clay or whatever. And so um his project is stopped, um which actually is, I think, more of a concern because you've got. You know, loose dirt in their mid-project, so I don't, I don't know that that's really necessarily a great thing. If you. Drive by it, it is a major snow trap, so I think it would be a a great thing for us, for our secondary road staff. If that hill were to get cut down, because it would help secondary roads out immensely with that snow trap there, and it would help traffic. So I I I see a lot of positives. I think unfortunately for Bruce, he's, you know, he's gotta cease activities until something here, something changes, but. I, in my opinion, I think it's a really kind of archaic ordinance, and I think that there needs to be an avenue where if someone is doing it the right way. I mean, they've got a local contractor that's in there that this is all, you know, a large, the county has hired this contractor to move dirt, so I mean, it's a good contractor. Um anyway, I think that there should at least be an avenue for someone to pursue that. Rather than to just say, you know, nope, can't do it. I I just think it's really regressive to a development.
I agree. Well, yeah, I think we should then, we should talk with Dan about what are, what's the pathway forward.
I did see in Dan's uh email to us as well, I mean, that it says he may be able to invoke an agricultural exemption. You know, if the property is being used as farm-related activities, which I'm guessing he does there, so.
Yeah, so he could, and that's why I talked with Dan about, he could, Bruce could still haul that dirt off and could, you know, or relocate it on the property. But that's the thing, is that he doesn't have a need for it, but there's other people in the county that have a need for it. So he's, you know, it's a win-win for all the parties involved. The contractors making money, Bruce is getting rid of dirt that he doesn't want, and and somebody, a developer that's needing dirt. Is getting it, so it's a win all the way around, but he can't do that, and so that's where. Um you know, and I I kind of, as a farmer, you know, we get certain. Things that we get to do, right? And I think sometimes as a private citizen, you look at that, and you're like, well, what the heck, why is that, why can that farmer take that hill down ten feet, but I can't. You know, and I.
Ran into the same thing with putting a building up, ag estates versus ag preservation. But I mean, you know, hopefully, if he can get that extent, you know, that exemption, you know, and get the board together and and do that, that'd be good.
Would the board, let me just say, um get with Daniel Priestley and see what are options, what's the pathway?
Yeah, and you could, I, we could have a call with him and just see if we, and I don't know what the turn, I mean. I'd say the bad news for Bruce is anything that the commission does typically takes some time, but it's only April, so I mean. He would still have a good portion of the year if if this ordinance were to get changed, but um. That's what I kinda like about the conditional use, is that those bodies can look at it and digest it and make sure, hey, you're gonna control erosion, right? You're gonna have a good contractor, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna have these parameters in place, but right now, that's not even an option. And I, that's what I just don't know that that's, you know, like. And for some of these communities, you take Sergeant Bluff's on a floodplain, Lawton's on a floodplain, Correctionville obviously is, Mowville is. In a lot of ways, they can't build unless they get filled dirt to move up. And um this ground that Bruce has would be prime residential ground that he's taking this hill off for acreages or whatever. But not in the current state, whether it be in a peak, you know, so. Again, I think if if we wanna try to develop in parts of the county, we're gonna have to move some dirt because of the extremes that we have. So let's try to get, let's try to get with Dan and discuss some of that.
I was in a meeting today where it was brought up about um is Woodbury County the city, are we doing everything we can to not inhibit growth or building? And it seems like this zoning ordinance, like you're just saying, it was inhibiting development. And so we should be opening up for development.
Well, the amount of dirt, how many of you guys have driven on the east side of Sergeant Bluff where they're hauling this dirt? I mean. I don't know what they're planning to develop there, but it could be millions of dollars of homes or businesses or what have you. And I mean, that's a net positive for us, for Sergeant Bluff, and so, but if they gotta have dirt to do it, it's, you know. So I think it's kind of a no-brainer.
All right, we'll follow up with Dan. Okay, anything else?
Um we got some good news a couple hours ago uh for landowners. South Dakota Public Utility Commission has denied the permit to Summit Carbon Solutions. They will, however, refile with a new route. So we can expect this to last the duration of our natural lives, but this is a good chapter.
So then my guess would be is that they would file a motion here in Iowa to dismiss. That permit, since the Iowa permit was based on South Dakota's permit.
That is good news.
Is the Senate still, are they still fighting in the Senate to take up that House bill? Matthew, do you know? I haven't heard anything last week, so.
Chad, all right, anything else? All right, if not, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.